Good afternoon, call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Cerna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, for item 54, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. This is the Sierra Sunrise Senior Apartments Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing and Approval of Tax Exempt Bonds.
Good afternoon Chair and members of the Board. Louise Eller, Housing Finance Analyst with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you requests approval of the issuance of up to $23 million in mortgage revenue bonds for the rehabilitation of Sierra Sunrise Senior Apartments. Sierra Sunrise Senior Apartments was built in 1978 and is located in Carmichael. The 119-unit building consists of studios and one-bedroom units. It will be rehabilitated by the developer, USA Properties. 114 units are currently assisted by a Section 8 Housing Assistance Payments Contract through HUD. After the bond issuance, the units will continue to be regulated by SHRA for an additional 55 years. The kitchens and bathrooms will be updated with solid surface counters, sinks, and finishes. All units will have new flooring and entry and hall, new entry doors, new patio doors and windows, new energy-efficient kitchen appliances, central heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems will be installed. Common areas will be upgraded and the leasing office will be rebuilt and expanded. The building exterior will be painted, the kitchen will be remodeled, and new appliances will be installed. The landscaping will include drought-tolerant plants, new irrigation drip systems, and expansion of the existing gardening area. The community room will be upgraded with new flooring, furniture, paint, and light fixtures. The project will continue to be managed by USA and resident services will continue to be provided by Life Steps. The developer has not yet completed the county's design review process. However, given the level of rehabilitation proposed, we do not anticipate significant cost increases. The budget percentage shows over $600,000 in contingency to cover unforeseen expenses. If there are significant changes in the scope or budget, SHRA will provide that information when we return to the Board for final bond document approval. In closing, staff recommends approving the issuance of mortgage revenue bonds for the rehabilitation of Sierra Sunrise Senior Apartments. A representative from USA Properties is here and staff is available to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions at this time from the Board? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just a brief one. On the upgrades, it mentions the elevator interior cosmetics will be updated. Is there any need to, is the elevator the same vintage as the apartments and would this be the time to install a new elevator if it was necessary? That's my question.
Yeah, I would like to call a representative from the development team up to answer that question.
Okay. Hello Steve, how are you?
Hey Don.
Good to see you.
Steve Gahl from USA Properties Fund, representing USA Properties. The elevator, we get inspections regularly.
Right.
To my knowledge, we have no operational issues with the elevator.
Okay.
I don't think that it's due for a sprucing up and not for a replacement.
Okay, and I was just curious, when you're obviously going through for a major remodel here and again, I don't know how much wear and tear you get on an elevator, but obviously it's critical for folks that are, you know.
Absolutely.
In a senior complex and so I, again, I wasn't insinuating that was, there was any problem with it, I was just wondering if this was a time, obviously if you're financing many other improvements, so. But obviously you've done your walkthrough and know if it's necessary or not, so that's all I had.
Thanks.
Any others? Ms. Peters?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. You've done a nice job on this project over the years.
Thank you.
So glad to hear that you wanted to go ahead and do this rehabilitation of the other properties. I do have a question about the temporary relocation services. Rentals are pretty tight these days, you probably know better than I do, so.
Yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit about your plan?
I think it's really more of a rehabilitation in place. I think we're talking about moving them on to another location on the site and then moving them back in in a matter of a couple of days kind of a thing. So it's not like a...
So it's onsite, you're going to move them to an emptying apartment and then move them back in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any others? Councils don't have to open a public hearing for a TEPF hearing? Lisa, do I have to open a public hearing for a TEPF hearing?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much. At this time, I have no speaker slips, so if there is anybody in the public, I will opening the public hearing. If you have any, if there's anyone that would like to address this issue at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, item 55, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of County of Sacramento. This is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Project Phase One Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing and Approval of Tax Exempt Bonds Option Agreement and Approval of Loan Commitment.
Good afternoon, I'm Susan Veezy with SHRA. The Board Letter Before You requests approvals for the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program Phase One Project. The federal government's RAD program allows public housing properties to transition to the project-based voucher program converting ownership from the federally financed conventional public housing model to a privately-owned low-income housing tax credit financing structure. In this first phase of the overall conversion, six small public housing sites will be transferred from the city and county housing authorities to Sacramento Housing Authority Repositioning Program Incorporated, or Sharp. They'll be transitioned to Sharp in order to access bonds and tax credits for substantial rehabilitation and long-term financial stability. Sharp is a nonprofit public benefit corporation created to implement the housing authority's asset repositioning strategy. To move forward with the project, we are seeking approval of a $25 million mortgage revenue bond issuance and approval from the county housing authority to enter into option agreements, seller carryback loans, and capital fund loans, all for the purposes of financing the acquisition and rehabilitation of 124 units among six scattered sites. There are three sites in the unincorporated county, two in the city of Sacramento, and one in the city of Elk Grove. It should be noted that capital fund loans can only be utilized for public housing properties. In general, the improvements include rehabilitation work to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, replacement of electrical, plumbing, and major systems including heating, air conditioning, and water heaters. New countertops, flooring, paint, and landscaping are included in the scope. Some sites will also include new roofing, cabinets, tubs and surrounds, and doors. Housing Authority staff will continue to manage the sites and provide resident services to the tenants. In addition, elderly and disabled residents will receive services from Life Steps. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the $25 million mortgage revenue bond issuance, option agreements, and loan commitments for the acquisition and rehabilitation of the Rental Assistance Demonstration Phase One Project. Staff is available from both Development Finance and the Housing Authority to address any questions you may have.
Supervisor Natoli?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Susan, so when it comes to this partnering with the new repositioning program incorporated, the ownership then is retained by the housing authority or does that transfer to this new body? And if so, what's the governing body for that particular organization if it's incorporated? Is it still the Board of Supervisors that has oversight or now we're providing financing and it goes to a third party?
So Sharp is a nonprofit and it is not governed by the Board of Supervisors, it has its own board. And it's been in existence for a while and has multiple properties that have been transitioned out of the public housing portfolio into the privatized low-income housing tax credit financing model. The ground will continue to be owned by the housing authority.
Okay.
And then leased back to Sharp, so the actual land and property will be...
So underlying land is owned by the housing authority, which obviously is under purview of the Board of Supervisors. And the reason I ask that is that, you know, certainly familiar with several of the properties, but I've been around long enough to remember when we went through just getting the units constructed in Old Town Elk Grove. And I know that, you know, during the drought, we had some stressors related to, you know, some of our landscaping and some of our properties and so forth and so on. You know, I picked the phone, whether it was Call You or LaChelle or whatever, and, you know, we always see those properties. So in this case, not that there's any concern at all with the suggested partner here, if there are issues that relate to property upkeep or to somebody's concerns, then...
You would still call us.
Still call you, okay.
Because we are issuing these bonds, we will be monitoring this like we do our other projects, so you can still give us a call.
That's fine. Again, I trust that this is a good strong partner, I have no problem partnering with a nonprofit. I understand why you went through this with us, you know, last fall and last year, talking about what we needed to do in order to position these properties, in order to be able to finance them more long-term and actually bring in, you know, needed improvements in reinvestment. So I just wanted to be clear about that and I have confidence it'll work fine. Thanks.
I just also wanted to add that the actual property management function will still be performed by the housing authority.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks LaChelle for that conversion. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address this item at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'd move staff recommendation.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 56, oh, we have a three, four-minute gap.
Take a brief recess? We're still on, we're still on camera, so do we take a brief recess or...
Hello? The chair didn't call a recess. Are we in recess?
Well, no, we're still on camera, so. Mr. Chair, can we take a brief recess? We've got four minutes and we're still on camera.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, we have three minutes.
Okay, great time to be there.
This is a small one.
Okay. It's high time now. And there was...
Okay, we'll come back to order.
The clerk please call the next item.
Okay, item 56 is the Transportation Workshop for the Jackson Corridor Development Project's Transportation Mitigation Strategy West Jackson Highway Master Plan, the Jackson Township Specific Plan, the New Bridge Specific Plan, and Mather South Community Master Plan.
Can I get the overhead presentation, please? Thank you. All right. Hi, it's nice to be before you today. I'm Matt Darrow with the Department of Transportation and I'm here to talk about the Jackson Corridor Master Plan's Transportation Workshop. I'm going to be working from my script because I've got a lot to say and I'm going to try and get through it as quick as I can without too much delay and then I imagine that we'll have questions at the end, which I'll be here to answer. We've got a whole slew of Department of Transportation folks here with myself as well, Ron, the Director and Chief, and Rick Carter, one of the other principals, as well as Todd Smith with Planning and Environmental Review. So, without any ado, today I want to bring to the Board up to speed on where we are with a few transportation-related items. Specifically, I have a brief update on the Trip Reduction Strategy and Trail Network and an overview of the Joint Traffic Analysis and Findings. And after I go through this information, I'll be discussing the Jackson Corridor Development Project's Transportation Mitigation Strategy and asking the Board for adoption of that policy. And if anyone has any questions on the geographic area we'll be discussing today, please refer to the vicinity map included as attachment one of your Board package. So the Jackson Corridor projects will include a trip reduction strategy that includes the trip reduction services listed here. I'm not going to go through each of them, but the top part of the slide is where I'll refer you. In a time where we see rapidly changing mobility options like bike sharing, scooters, and autonomous shuttles, the proposed strategy allows for flexibility due to an uncertain future of technological advances in transportation. The strategy will be phased in early and developed so trip reduction behaviors become established in individuals and, of course, a traditional transit service will be part of the plan. Funding for the strategy will likely either be by a property assessment, an annexation into CSA 10, or the creation of something similar. Now I want to point out some of the highlights of the proposed transit service and I will refer to the top side, part of the slide for a brief second. So the proposed transit will connect the proposed land uses to light rail. It'll, they'll also connect the proposed land uses between the individual plan areas and there'll be separate networks established for each standalone plan area as well as a combined network established for the multiple plan areas, which will improve efficiency. Service will be provided on a 15- and 30-minute headway for peak and off-peak hours respectively. And when the Jackson Corridor plan areas build out, the daily boardings of the combined network, which I'll show on the next slide, is anticipated to be approximately 16,500. And for reference, RT's Gold Line, which is light rail between Folsom and downtown, is approximately 21,800 daily boardings. So your Board Letter Attachment shows the individual project transit networks for your reference, but what I'm showing on this slide is a figure depicting the combined transit network for the entire Jackson Corridor plan area. Just quickly going through it, what I'm highlighting here in green is the Jackson Express Line, which will connect light rail stations at Sunrise and Watt Avenue and travel through the plan areas. What I'm showing here in pink is the Jackson Local Route, which will be more of a local route ending at a light rail station at Watt, but will be traveling through a handful of various land uses. And this last yellow route is also a local route called the West Jackson Local Route, which will end at Watt Light Rail and travel through different land uses in the plan. The Jackson Corridor plan area will also include a network of off-roadway trails that will encourage alternative modes of travel in the form of biking and walking, and this network was collaboratively developed to link future residential communities with schools, parks, transit centers, and employment and commercial land uses. The network includes regional, conventional, and local trails, which are 12, 10, and 8-foot paved widths respectively. And some additional features in the trail network include connectivity to existing and future regional trails outside the plan area, enhanced crossing at major intersections, and allowance for two-bridge crossings of the Folsom-South Canal. And one final note I wanted to point out is that the funding for approximately 38% of the regional trails is contained in our SCTDF program. So what I'm showing here is the Jackson Corridor Plan Area Trail Network. This show, this figure shown on the slide is an attachment in your Board package and it's quite busy, so what I'm highlighting here is the regional trails in green and the conventional trails will show up in red with the simple purpose of illustrating the fact that the network is extensive.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Chair, just on why you have that schematic up?
Yep.
So who's anticipated that regional and conventional trails, are they maintained by the local park district or are you anticipating there's going to be another entity in the definition between the regional and conventional?
I mean, I would say they'd be maintained the same as the current trails at this point. There might be maintenance built into the finance plans.
So the, what's the distinction between a regional and conventional again?
Width, 12-foot widths versus 10- and 8-foot widths. They're all class, they're, the regional and conventional are off-street, but 12-foot...
They're all off-street, they're all off-street trails.
Exactly.
It's the definition as to the size and...
Right, we're only showing regional and conventional, I'm sorry, regional and, regional and conventional here.
Conventional.
We're not showing the local on this, on this map, so these are all off-street here, yeah.
So would you flash that graphic again and show the...
Yeah, so, so in green will be the conventional.
Regional.
I'm sorry, regional, and in red will be the conventional. So together, we have a massive network of trails.
And there's no overlap, just interconnectivity?
There's interconnectivity.
Okay, all right.
And locals are not shown here. And local trails are not shown.
Oh, I think Liz wanted to add something here. Yeah, Liz?
Just a point of clarification, regional parks is going to be maintaining the regional trails?
Okay, so you'll be the regional trails, conventional would be then Cordova Recreation Park or South Gate or...
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ron, are you trying to...
And we've been in conversations with the park district relative to the trail plan, in addition, obviously, to the county parks. Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Okay. So the next thing I want to discuss is a summary of the Joint Traffic Analysis for the Jackson Corridor Plan Area. On the, on the slide, you can kind of see the four plan areas. In red, we've got West Jackson. In yellow, we have Jackson Township. In blue, we've got New Bridge. And in pink, we've got Mather South. And as you can imagine, the scope of the traffic study for this development covered a broad study area, as you can see here, which is the, sort of the opaque coloring. And it was coordinated with all of the neighboring jurisdictions listed on this slide. So that study evaluated both individual plan area project impacts as well as impacts for all four projects combined. It identified impacted roadway segments and intersections and it also identified each individual plan area's fair share of those roadway segments and intersection impacts. The slide shows an example taken directly from that traffic study showing some of these impacts as well as the new roads that will be built in the plan, as shown with these arrows, as well as existing roads that will need to be improved or widened. Thought it'd be a good idea to list a few of the highlights of improvements that were identified in the traffic analysis. Without going through each of them, we expect about $500 million in roadway improvements when all said and done. Here's a list of some of the roadways and intersection improvements we'll see. I won't read the list. I'll just point out the functionality improvements at the bottom. That's a new category of improvement that we have created for this Jackson Corridor Plan Area. Lot of Tulane rural roads out in that area that don't have minimum 12-foot road width, lane widths, and don't have shoulders. And we're going to bring a lot of those roads up to 12-foot lane widths and five-to-six-foot paved shoulders as a minimum standard.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, Matt, if I could, and again, knowing there's been a lot going to this, to this study, but there's a discussion that, you know, I feel is very important for this Board to have when we see some of the projects, particularly Mather South, and it doesn't pertain as much to Mather South as it does to the connectivity east-west between Kiefer Boulevard and Douglas Road. And, you know, you showed two trails, we had this conversation, we talked about the overall planning for Mather, and at what juncture, before you get too far down the road and there'd been a lot of work, that you somehow, I don't want to foreclose the ability for this Board to have that discussion with the community and certainly with the Department of Transportation and any project applicants, but that connectivity over the Sunrise Boulevard with either Bosporus or Chrysanthemum, one of those two, in the city of Rancho Dova, across the Folsom South, seems to me, when I, at least from a layperson's standpoint, but somebody represents the area, that, you know, having that additional connectivity will be important. But we haven't had that conversation at all in depth and, you know, you've done the transportation studies, those have been presented to us over time, going back several years, we've had that conversation, but we really haven't rendered any decision and yet decisions about financing, about where roads are going to go. And so my question boils down to, how is that accommodated? Should this Board in the planning process for either that project or for other projects, because there may be other discussions we have about roads beyond what's shown on maps that you've mapped out for extensions of, you know, Happy Lane, Kiefer Boulevard, you know, Waterman coming through at some point, Vineyard Road. So when we get an opportunity and then how does that impact on projects as they come through? Because they're not all going to come through at the same time. And in my view, that's very important and hopefully whatever's been done thus far doesn't preclude this Board's ability, should we desire to either prescribe it as part of a plan, get dedicated road, you know...
Right. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that I fully understand the question, but what I think you're asking and what my answer that comes to my mind, and I might ask Ron to jump in if maybe that's not the question you're asking.
Yeah.
But we're setting this thing up to not preclude some of those connections that you're talking about.
Okay.
But you're right, those aren't proposed connections at this point, but it's just we're going to set land uses up so that we won't preclude something such that later somebody goes, well, we can't put a road to the east because there's houses there or there's development there. So we're setting it up for that ability.
But then how's it accommodate within the financing plan, with this dynamic model that you didn't anticipate it as an improvement? There may be improvements that you anticipate that don't get built for some reason, but so how does this model allow us then, so we don't get into a bind that, well, somebody says, well, you know, I can't bear all that responsibility, you know, it wasn't part of some plan that the Board looked at back in 2015 and, you know, considered 2020, but now in 2025, you know, we think that, you know, we haven't precluded that option, we think it's important to do. How does this model accommodate that?
So I'll say first, then maybe Ron will jump in, but what I, what I want to simply point out is what we're talking about today is the Transportation Mitigation Strategy Workshop. We're not talking about the finance plan necessarily.
Yeah.
That could come, that will come later, that could include something in there if it was so the desire of the Board. We're talking about...
Thanks Supervisor Natoli, I think Ron has some clarification.
Okay. So there will be multiple, again, Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. There'll be multiple opportunities and conditions of approval and other things as we bring financing plans forward and every, and all the documents begin to get finalized. This is a mitigation strategy that will help us set the priority for those improvements, but there'll be many, many opportunities along the way and we've been working all along to look at that issue.
So the mitigation strategy doesn't preclude, as we go through specific project hearings over time, of, you know, looking at connectivity and/or there may be, you know, some reason why folks say we don't want to connect something and, you know, that won't be the first time this Board's heard that either. And so we look at, you know, what the impacts are to, you know, offloading to other roads and other streets. And so I just want to be clear, so that as we hear specific projects, we have the ability to, you know, look at street circulation, recognizing it goes through a whole planning process, but because this, as I said, this is a lot of connectivity here in that, you know, folks could, I guess reasonably argue that, well, you didn't look at it in the strategy way back when and now, you know, you want to, you know, pull this out of, you know, some idea either that the neighborhood expresses or the members of the Board think is, you know, better, you know, a better connection, better circulation, you know. So I wanted to be sure that, you know, we don't get ourselves in, you know, in either the financial piece of this and/or from the policy land use standpoint, don't preclude the ability to have those conversations.
Yeah, it absolutely does not preclude those conversations and additional things. It, it also may in fact help in the timing of those, but it absolutely does not preclude those things being brought in.
Yeah, if you're looking... Agreed.
No, I'm just waiting for you.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. All right.
Continue, Matt.
Thank you. So all this, although this workshop is not intended to dig into the funding and
Alright.
Continue, Matt.
Thank you. So all this, although this workshop is not intended to dig into the funding and transportation mitigations, but rather present the process for delivering them, I wanted to briefly point out a few things worth mentioning. It's the public facilities finance plan that will fund the traffic mitigations. Now, in past practice, for developments in close proximity to one another, like these are, each financing plan would have called for each development to fund 100% of overlapping improvements. But what we're doing in the Jackson Corridor is having each of the four developments pay their fair share towards overlapping improvements. This will allow for the fees to remain reasonable, and will also assure that the funding for roadway improvements will be available, and they'll be implemented in a timely manner to support the growth in land uses. Here's one final slide on transportation funding before we move on to the proposed transportation mitigation strategy. This slide, which is in your board package as well, was prepared by special districts to illustrate the universe of transportation funding for each individual plan area, including trails, transit, onsite roadways, other jurisdiction fair shares, and regional roadways. These are all the costs that will be included in each of the individual finance plans. And as we move forward and talk about the transportation mitigation strategy, we're only talking about the items in red, which are strictly regional roads, including facilities that overlap with the CTDF, as well as functionality improvements in certain intersections that don't overlap with the CTDF. The strategy won't include the trails, or the transit, or the onsite road fair shares, or other jurisdictions. So earlier, we talked about how the traffic study identified improvements needed to mitigate impacts. So with the Jackson Corridor development projects, we're looking to adopt a new policy regarding how required transportation improvements are assigned. So in order to do that, we need to quickly go through the history of mitigation strategies. So in the early 90s, developers would pay their fees, and the county would deliver the improvements. But what happened was that the county, a lot of times, could not always deliver improvements in a timely manner. So in the mid-2000s, county started to require developers to deliver the improvements based on triggers. Now, this system worked in a good economy, but as the downturn happened, many of the developers couldn't afford to deliver the triggered improvements because they were not always financially sized in proportion to development increments. So development was held up. And also, the improvements weren't always located near the actual development increment that was being built. So today, we're presenting a new strategy that's more dynamic, where each increment of development is assigned improvements based on its size, its location, and its impacts. So here's an example of the current trigger methodology. Development goes up this corner in the, in the plan area. The tra, the traffic goes on these particular roadways. But the trigger improvements that were determined years earlier, based on phasing assumptions that are no longer valid, are somewhere else. And most of the time, they aren't financially proportional to the development size, so they're not affordable for this developer to actually construct them. The new transportation mitigation strategy proposes assignment of improvements based on each development's increment size, its impacts, and its fair share fees. The strategy will replace the current practice of assigning triggers with a micro-analysis of each development increment using a newly-developed dynamic implementation tool. And without going into all those details, each plan area will be broken into smaller districts. Staff will enter the details of development increment into the tool. The tool will distribute the trips to the network and identify road and intersection impacts and necessary improvements. So if we go to the previous example again, but now apply the new strategy, we'll see improvements in close proximity to development. And they'll be financially proportional to the size of that development, and will be affordable to the developer to go build. So once the tool identifies the needed improvements, staff checks the development increment's funding obligation, which is defined as the number of units times the amount of fee per unit. And staff will assign the build improvements that cost up to 100% of that funding obligation. If the build improvements cost less than the funding obligation, the difference in dollars will be collected in a reserve fund that can be used to fund larger improvements. So the example on the bottom of the slide shows somebody coming in with 300 units, and each unit, based on their, their finance plan, is responsible for $15,000 in fees. So we take the 300 times 15,000, and we find 4.5 billion. So the developer will be required to construct that improvement that comes out of the tool, valued at a dollar cost up to 4.5 million dollars. And finally, I've listed here some of the guiding principles of the transportation mitigation strategy. The full details are included as an attachment to the board package and represent the culmination of a collaborative effort with staff and each of the development teams to arrive at this point. I won't, I won't read through this slide, but if there's any questions, I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll ask. But this concludes my presentation. The staff is requesting direction on the items presented and asking the board to adopt the Jackson Corridor Development Project's transportation mitigation strategy policy. Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Absolutely.
So I just want to, want to make sure I understand how this would work, because this is, this is atypical, right? This is kind of new territory for everyone.
Correct.
So how, how should we think about, using the example below there, the 300 DUEs? How should we consider the construction of an improvement? Let's just call it a signalized intersection relative to how we used to think of it, which is, okay, as long as your, as long as your LOS is met, then that's how your mitigation measure's going to be satisfied. So how do we, how do we kind of interpret this?
That's still, nothing in the traffic study and the SEQA, the mitigation measures identified in the universe of improvements that all these developments cause and require to be built changes. Those still exist as they would before with levels of service. It's, whereas before, we would say there would have been a sensitivity analysis done right about now in the process, and say, 500 units, and the developer thinks 500 units in the bottom westerly corner of this big rectangular plot of development is coming in right now. So we're going to, we're going to assume 500 units come in, and that tells us to do X, Y, and Z intersections, roadway segments. But five, 10 years go down the road, and they build in the upper right corner, and they build 500 units. Well, what the triggers has told us is they need to build X, Y, and Z back in the bottom left-hand corner of this development. So instead of that, what we're doing is we're saying, instead of assigning that as a trigger early on, each time an increment of about 300 units comes in, we're, we've developed a spreadsheet-based dynamic implementation tool that will be able to put that data into. It will distribute the traffic from the actual located information of number of units, square foot of building, what have you, onto the roads that are adjacent, and will tell us, quote-unquote, "what breaks in the system." And that's what our mitigation measures are. Now, that mitigation measure will be, is already identified. We have a universe of things that are listed as mitigation measures. So it will tell us what from that, what two or three things from that list break. And we, and then we, financial, sorry. And then we do a financial increment check based on the size, and we know that they're about financially responsible for $4.5 million of improvements. So we're going to assign that particular developer something that is sized accordingly. Because another thing that has happened in the past is that triggered list of 500 might have been $15 million worth of improvements, but somebody that can only carry $4.5 million goes, "I can't, I can't do it."
I guess where, where I was getting a little nervous about what you're, how you're explaining this is that you were focused, and it sounds like you still are to some, to some degree, that the ultimate objective is to equitably identify the cost share per the developer, which I understand that. But for, for me, and probably for us, we're also very much interested in understanding how the impact is going to be actually mitigated. So is this spreadsheet, is this algorithm going to, taking a consider, taking into consideration every permutation of how phasing may occur or not, when certain developments and their type, whether it be commercial or residential, go before others? And do you just plug it in, and then it spits out, you know, developer X goes and pays $10 million for their, their improvements because that will satisfy the LOS requirements for these intersections?
No, I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, I think. And it's, and there's, you're correct, and there's, there's... In the past, this was easier to keep track of. This is going to be a lot more labor-intensive for our staff to keep track of this.
Let me jump in and add something here.
Yeah.
The, so the, as Matt mentioned earlier, there's still $500 million worth of improvements that are going to be built. This strategy is going to allow us to determine what improvement needs to be built when. And so Matt talked about the benefit of the strategy, you know, whether they develop in the northeast corner, the southwest corner. It'll be able to gauge that. But also, with four significant developments, if one development is moving faster than other developments, we'll, we'll keep the tool up to date, and it'll be showing us real-time information about what the, the biggest impact is and what the highest priority roadway is to spend the money. So what we did before, just real quickly, is we would, we would assume who's going to, what development's going to develop at what rate? At what area of their development's going to develop first? And then we would set triggers that were then set in stone. This is allowing us real-time information to be able to adjust to the highest priority and the greatest impact in a timely manner.
So does this approach then minimize the potential surprise for the first developer who has the, you know, $30 million rooftop?
Yes.
And absolutely, and that was another, when we set those triggers, let's say we set a trigger before at 2,000 DUEs. All of the development occurring before that, didn't need to worry about it. But the, when, the one developer that came in and actually went over that threshold, then triggered that improvement, and it became, basically put development at a standstill. This is allowing us to make sure the right improvements get put in, put in at the right time, and we're able to adjust based on the rate and, and the area of development.
Last question, has this been used in any other local jurisdiction in our region?
No.
So we're a bit of a guinea pig.
Yep.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Supervisor Nortoli.
Yes, in a moment, I want you, and take you back to page nine, but I wanted to ask a question just along the lines of the ability to stay timely with the improvements. And I appreciate a little bit of history there, because coming into the 1990s, there was a whole lot of frustration on the east side of Highway 99, I can assure you, with improvements that may have had some funding behind them. And we had, you know, some of the early iterations of our financing districts and such. So there will be a retention, as I, if I recollect quickly from the documents here, of about 20%, so that when, albeit with, even with your best models, something occurs at an intersection, and you're in, you know, crunch mode, you know, at all hours of the day, and, you know, the phones are ringing off the hook, or people are really concerned, or accidents occur at a particular location that you didn't anticipate. You have the ability to respond quickly and timely on those, right?
Right, and you're referring to the fact that I, I, for interest of getting through the presentation quickly, and there's so many innuendos, I'm not going to try to cover them all, but you correctly refer to the fact that that $4.5 million example, where we said, "That's their obligation." What we're going to try to do is we're going to try to assign 80% of that cost in an improvement, and collect 20% of those dollars into a reserve fund to be able to react to things like you just said.
Okay. And along those same lines, Matt, again, it was in documentation, but the county does have the ability, if somebody doesn't want to get into building something, that they could, you know, the county could accept the payment.
That's correct.
And that would fit with the same model, though. So you would use that, if that money came in, it wouldn't get there, and then, "Oh, my gosh, we got a pressure point over here, so the money gets moved over there." Basically, it would, you know, the county and/or complement it with maybe another development that was going on, or a road improvement, that money would be assigned to there.
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask you on this slide here, because a couple of things. One, on your, again, it was, you know, bullet points, examples, but the fact that you don't have Douglas Road extension in that first set of bullets.
Now, this is just examples pulled, but that stuff's in there.
But Douglas has kind of been on the back burner for some time. And if there's one neighborhood in that immediate area that really is impacted with current traffic, and even with improvements that are contemplated here, is going to be a go-to route for some time, and that's the Independence and Mather neighborhood. And so if I didn't speak up, obviously, and certainly in fairness to those folks, where we, you know, they contemplate both improvements to Zimphadell, Eagles Nest, and certainly to Excelsior, Douglas Extension. I just think it's important, because, you know, put $100,000 into budget to begin to do planning behind that. I don't know if that's gotten figured into the finance plans or not, but, you know, the price tag for that two-lane road where we own the land is pretty, pretty pricey. And yet, that's, you know, that's important to the southern end of the airport, as well as that neighborhood. So I just want to be sure it didn't get lost in the mix.
Point taken, and, and it's not too late for the finance plan. So it will be the next.
Okay. The other one is on here, you show intersection improvement on Floren and Excelsior. That got covered, at least for signalization, in the North Vineyard Plan, if I'm not mistaken. It may not be the full widening to four, you know, the 4-4 intersection, whatever, but... So how did, why did this we have called out particularly on this?
So I, I think I mentioned earlier in the slides the fact that there's lots of overlap.
Right.
Okay? And so the, when eventually finance plans get put together, there's going to be a reckoning, if you will, for the fact that there may be other plans that have, have dollars in other plans for locations that have, of course, showed up with this traffic study. And I think you're right, that is one of the locations, that there's some money in there, if not, if not requirement, I think, in specific agreements. So there's nothing magical as to why it's in there. It's just an, you know, improvement that's important.
And in addition, there were, there's $500 million, as we said, of improvements. There's also improvements that are going to be built in stages. And so what you, you may see that, for instance, the existing two lanes, it has to be six, may go from two to four, and then four to six. Certainly, intersections also aren't always built out to their ultimate in the first step. And so that's, that's also taken into account of when those are needed with this strategy.
Let me ask another question relates to just improvements in general, that we have typically relied on the signalized intersections, because again, we use a lot of, you know, 90-degree intersections that are rural that ultimately come into the, you know, into the suburban grid. But certainly, as it relates to what Al Grove has done in that rural suburban interfaces, they've utilized the roundabouts on Waterman Road in particular, and Bradshaw, and at Sheldon. And I guess I'm curious, as the, particularly as you're looking at new areas, it may not work, because obviously, there's a lot more land take with that, and that certainly has an expense associated with it, let alone what impacts you have to, you know, existing property development at those locations. Are we contemplating in this plan, though, utilizing some of those types of improvements with new development?
Correct. In fact, I can think of a couple of locations off the top of my head. Rock Creek Parkway is part of West Jackson, and that was going to have some of those, and it's, as well as Zimphadell adjacent to Mather Field, and the entrances into and out of that land use as well.
Okay.
And what, and what this mitigation strategy will do is it will allow us to target that improvement and say that improvement's needed. There'll be future chances for this board to weigh in on that, the actual designs, as we start to bring those projects forward.
So back to your trip reduction and your transit portions of this, then, the, this is kind of the last question, at least at this juncture, that you, you talk about, you know, full funding, certainly in increments of, of funding as, you know, they can be standalone and/or coordinated. Is it that each of the developments have their own agreements with regional transit? And CSA 10, again, we're still working through that in the vineyard area, where just had the report two weeks ago, that, you know, we haven't reached critical mass there. We run a, a, you know, I think it's not even a shuttle. I guess it's a van pool right now. And I think one of the, the opportunities that could potentially be lost, and, you know, who knows with some of the evolution here, is that if you don't have that on the ground fairly early, and yet you still run it at, you know, you're not going to run full buses, and, yeah, in all likelihood. But if you wait till you get to critical mass, to institute it, then folks have made choices, not about whether they live, but about their driving habits and so forth. So how is it that this differs in, in, in previous approaches? And I know our general plan dictates that we do some of that, too. So I guess I'm just, if you could, for the record, maybe put that out there.
So, so each individual development is being set up so it's a standalone, and it accomplishes all of its, and it's, it's what it's required to accomplish environmentally. We are working and have been working for the last two years with regional transit, and also as being a possible provider. So we are looking at a lot of the things that, that we've learned through CSA 10. There's, there's a minimum threshold that will be required, and then there's certain developments that will go even above and beyond that. And so we're working with each individual plan area to make sure it's standalone. And we'll also be able to capitalize on them all working together, be able to capitalize on them all working together, as you saw, the transit network at final buildout is pretty extensive.
Okay. One last question, then, and we worked on this, certainly, the most recent experience was with the HCP, and, you know, it's the strategy, the get-ahead, stay-ahead, well, and I don't know that we're ever going to get ahead, as it relates to transportation improvements, but when I think about the Jackson corridor right now, Jackson Highway, you know, none of these developments have been approved, and we've got, you know, certainly morning and evening congestion, and some of that could be alleviated, you know, with some work, obviously, it might be incremental, is there the ability to, again, to try to, you know, even get into a pace that would put us on par, so we're not always chasing this, not just with the developments that are approved that will generate a trouble, we're talking about all the paths to traffic that comes through these areas, and I know Supervisor Kennedy's getting, you know, some, you know, feedback from folks down in portions of the district where we align, and probably Supervisor Serna as well, where, you know, you just, people are finding these congested corridors, so then they're, you know, they're moving to other ones, and then you got, you know, your truck traffic in the mix, obviously, you have, you know, you still have our areas where significant aggregate resources are drawn out, and, so I guess I'm curious, does this strategy provide us with any roadmap that would allow us to fund some of those things, i.e., I brought this up before, Brad, you know, Bradshaw-Jackson Highway, where, you know, even, you know, we put the right turn lane in on the westbound section, when you really need it from coming from the east to west, and, you know, and you get it funded through mitigation for other projects, so I get, so what about, you know, Sunrise and Bradshaw, Excelsior downstream of Waddell, although Waddell's pretty, you know, it's fairly wide on some legs of that intersection.
So, yes, so we currently have the Transportation Development Fee Program that we model exactly what you're seeing, which is the increased traffic and where it occurs, and it is true that-
Don't need a model, it's real life.
Right, correct.
Hey, you can take the calls.
We're seeing those priorities even without the Jackson corridor developments, we're seeing some of the roadways that are in the plan being a priority now, and so, certainly, as we, and if you look at, an example is South Waddell, that we're moving forward in anticipation of delivering in 2021, we have some aggressive schedules for a lot of those priorities. This tool itself is really going to implement, it's the first time we've used it, the revenue that comes in as a part of these plans, the Jackson corridor plans, and so, we won't be able to utilize this exact tool until those plan areas start generating revenue, but we do use a similar tool in the SCTDF now.
Okay, so, to sum it up, so is there any chance that we can get out ahead of some of this, obviously, you mentioned that South Waddell Quarter, I'm familiar with that, but what about, you know, Bradshaw-Jackson, Sunrise at Jackson?
We're working on those now.
And everything around said is right on, but I wanted to add one more thing that came to my mind, is that this is going to prompt, this effort of development is prompting us to get some of the cross-jurisdictional agreements with adjacent neighbors together, and, you know, of course, you know, we'd like to see funds come our way from their development as well, too, but we've got to get those established, and that will be something that this causes us to be proud to do, so we're going to start that one, too.
Yeah, we had that conversation 2011 with the adoption of the general plan, we had, you know, some, you know, and I know we've worked with Folsom Ranch on the City of Sacramento to some degree, and maybe Elk Grove as well, but we don't have, I don't think we have agreements with any of those jurisdictions.
With the city, we have, since that conversation, we have entered into an agreement with the City of Sacramento and the City of Ranch Cordova, and we've also, because the only remaining development in Folsom was the SOI, we have a Folsom SOI agreement, so we are working towards finalizing those.
That's good. Okay, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I do have some public speaker cards. Grant Taylor.
Good afternoon, Grant Taylor with Stone Ridge Properties, proponents of the West Jackson Highway Master Plan, just wanted to start by thanking staff for all their hard work and collaboration with us, and putting this program together, we think it will really help with the orderly development of this corridor here, and I'd like to express our team's support for the policies here.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Grant.
Jim Wiley.
Jim Wiley with Taylor Wiley on behalf of Jackson Township, and I'd like to echo what Grant said, we want to thank staff for their hard work on this, and we believe this will help in the orderly development of this area, as Supervisor Natoli raised, this is structured to have the, a minimum of 300 units coming forward, so you're funding a bigger chunk to make sure that you stay ahead of the system, so, if there's any other questions, be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card I have, so, is there any other questions or comments from the board? Motion?
Hey, Mr. Chair, again, thanks to all the folks that worked on it, I know this has been in the works for some time, and I think it's an approach that has, obviously, flexibility, but I think certainly has a roadmap for hopefully being successful to allow, you know, this board and future boards, and certainly, as development plans come through, to hopefully allow us to, you know, meet the obligations, but also keep pace with the need for mobility in all its various forms out in this area of the county, so, I would move the adoption of the Jackson Corridor Development Project Transportation Mitigation Strategy Policy.
We have three seconds, but let me, before we vote, though, I do, I also want to echo Supervisor Natoli, and really give credit to our staff for being creative, but also to all of the applicants who, this is, I mean, this is not a perfect, there's never a perfect solution to this, but I think that we guinea pigs up here, I think that we're heading into new territory, but I think it's one of fairness, and will achieve the goals of both parties, so, thanks to both the applicants as well as staff for working through this situation. Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. For item 57, Chairman, I do need to announce that if they have any public comments, I need to take an oath.
Would anybody who's planning on addressing this issue at the podium, please rise, raise your right hand.
And the appropriate responses, I do, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement I have been sworn. Okay, so, for item 57, this is the Squirrel Monkey Haven Certification of a Final Environmental Impact Report for Squirrel Monkey Haven, and Appeal of the Zoning Administrator's Approval of a Conditional Use Permit for a property located at 11859 North Valanson Road, on the east side of Colony Road in the Southeast Area Community, the environmental determination is an environmental impact report.
Good afternoon, members of the board, LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, here to give the staff presentation, this item, again, is at 11859 North Valanson Road, near Colony in the Southeast Area, the zoning administrator had originally approved a conditional use permit requested by Christine and Paul Buckmaster, who we refer to as the applicants, to allow a kennel for up to 55 squirrel monkeys. Squirrel monkeys are a smaller monkey, New World monkey, typically weigh between one pound and is a little under two and a half pounds in size each. An appeal of that approval by the zoning administrator was filed by Dawn and Xena Klontz. The Community Planning Advisory Council had recommended approval, so there was no path for a CPAC appeal, they considered appealing based on the merits of the project, which would have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but instead, they filed, they had concerns about whether a full environmental impact report had been prepared, and so, they filed the appeal to the Board of Supervisors based on two things, whether an EIR had been prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act, and whether a kennel for a small animal was the right zoning mechanism in order to consider this. I did want to note, because it has come up in a separate item recently, that with regard to the ability to apply for a use permit for a small animal kennel, that can only be done in agres, RD1, RD2, and commercial zones, so your typical RD5 zone, you would not be able to ask for this type of use permit, and furthermore, you would need a minimum one acre, net acre size in order to apply for the use permit. So, this came on appeal to the board on two dates, first on May 8th of last year, and the item at the end of that discussion was continued in order for a meeting to be convened by the county between the various parties to see if something, an agreement or different conditions could be worked out. That meeting was held on May 23rd, and we were back in front of the board on June 19th, we had revised some of the conditions at that point, but agreement was not reached, and the concerned parties still had their concerns. So, the board granted the appeal on the basis that an EIR had not been prepared, and in part because the applicant's attorneys for the Buckmasters was concerned about the legal challenge, and that a negative declaration is harder to defend in court, and so, they were willing to have a full EIR prepared. So, the board accepted that and directed it in EIR be prepared, and that has been done. The EIR was released, the draft EIR was released on March 27th, the final EIR was released on June 3rd. I'm going to cover a couple things from that EIR analysis that were points of concern, in particular with regard to the biological resources, there'd been a lot of testimony about a pond on the back, and whether that had the potential to be habitat for tiger cell and mander, so the biological study looked at that and concluded that there was no potential for significant impact, and there's no added mitigation, we did add some standard mitigation about doing nesting bird surveys. And then, we also looked in some detail at noise, because that had been a big component of concern through the prior discussion, and do want to note that the original project had had a discussion about the use of acoustical curtains on the outside kennel areas, but that was not part of the original project description, and that was not studied, so the noise study was done not assuming the use of acoustical curtains on the outside kennels. So, the noise analysis looked at, there's several detailed tables, table noise eight of the final EIR looks at predicted noise levels at the nearest property lines, and concludes that the predicted property line noise levels would be below the measured ambient noise, there's table nine, which looks at single event noise, because apparently these kinds of monkeys can get agitated three to five times a day and have some shrieking noises, so the noise analysis concludes that the highest level of noise during those events would be below the 55 standard at the nearest resident, even if the window there is open. And then, the final table looks at a comparison of the monkeys to a dog kennel, and concludes that the outdoor kennel area, if this was a dog versus a squirrel monkeys, would be less than a comparable dog barking. So, that, those are the components of the final EIR that I was going to cover in my presentation, and then I was going to move on to reviewing how the project is conditioned and some of the details of those project conditions. Project, or condition number two requires compliance with a whole series of exhibits, exhibit A through I, those are in Attachment 4 to your board report, exhibit F includes a series of operating procedures that the kennel has to meet the accreditation standards of the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries, it covers a lot of detail about odor and waste removal, having to do with daily cleaning, weekly sanitation, it talks about the insulation for noise in the indoor areas, and specifies that the monkeys can only be outside between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM on weekdays, and 9:00 AM and 8:00 PM on weekends, there's an exhibit G, which is an emergency prevention and action plan that addresses emergencies such as animal escape, human medical issues, and environmental issues like fire and security breaches, there's an exhibit H, which is an emergency succession plan, speaking to their board of directors with a contingency plan for organizational succession, and then exhibit I is a zoonotic disease prevention plan that speaks to how they would implement the standards set by the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Animal Welfare, and the American Veterinary Medical Association, and it does note that squirrel monkeys are a low-risk species for zoonotic transmission, are not known to pose any special bacterial or viral disease hazards to humans that interact with them. Condition number three had been revised after our meeting with some of the concerned citizens, it talks about the wild animal permit, including that the information about the monkeys has to be available for inspection by County Animal Care, USDA, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife at all times, and that if the permit is revoked, the animals must be removed within 30 days. Condition number five restricts access to the property, indicates that the kennel cannot be open to the general public, and visitors are limited to two cars per day, and no more than five cars per week, and only between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, although that limit does not apply to staff, or veterinarians, or inspectors. Condition number six deals with keeping the area dust-free, seven having to do with storage of feed to any issues with rodents, condition number 18 requires compliance with the county noise ordinance, and condition number 23 requires notification of the sheriff if there's an escaped animal, so those were a few of the conditions that I want to highlight to you. And that concludes the staff presentation, and we do have an applicant representative here to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, I have, is there any, board member has any questions, comments?
After testimony.
Okay, then I will go to public comment and call Mr. Avdus.
We would normally call the appellant, is there an appellant?
I just didn't have a card for the appellant.
I do believe when the appellant was here during your hearing on the fee waiver, they had indicated to the board members that they were not planning on attending the hearing, so, they do not appear to be here, and they had indicated that.
Right, and we have bifurcated the two issues. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Nick Avdus with Thomas Law Group, and I've been sworn, here on behalf of Paul and Chris Buckmaster, I don't think I have anything to add to staff's presentation, seeing that the appellant in this case has, in essence, withdrawn their opposition to this project, I will say that it's been looked at six ways to Sunday, I'd say, and I think the process worked, and, you know, all environmental and potential environmental impacts to the, of the project have been fully disclosed, and are happy to answer any questions that you may have on the project.
Any questions?
No, I'm ready.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, back to the board, Mr. Natoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, before I make some comments, just, I wanted to maybe ask, LeAnn, and this relates to information, I guess, we actually, board received back in March from Dave Dickinson relative to the wild animal permit and to the processed use for that, and I met with Mr. Avdus and Christine and Paul today, and mentioned to them that it comes out of a 1990 Sacramento County Code section, and I just want to be clear, we don't have too many instances where we have the notice that goes out, but it's a key piece, obviously, to what's being requested here, and I would, I guess I would ask, maybe now, we could work with Dave, he was, you know, thoughtful in his response, but he, and I'll just read from what was sent to the board, said, "Animal Care and Regulation Department will follow Title 8 of the Sacramento County Code, which stipulates the Chief Animal Control will post a notice within 14 days from the receipt of a wild animal permit application, posted notice will be in the immediate vicinity of the location for which the permit is sought, Animal Care and Regulation Department will create such a notice when applicable, and place it in a visible location at nearby intersections where legal to do so, Animal Care and Regulation Department would also distribute the notice to nearby neighbors either via mail or by direct in-person distribution depending on the situation." I think that since this links up with a planning process, there maybe should be some coordination, maybe in County Code, might be worth at some point in time updating, because it talks about, you know, everything has to be in writing, if somebody wants to make a comment on it, in writing to the Chief of Animal Control, at the Animal Control Center, and such, I know that when we had this discussion, you know, a year ago, or a little more a year ago, it just seems to me that this process, even though it's rarely used, I'm not saying it doesn't work, I just want, because I know with the planning department, we make specific relative, mail notification, to posting, and there's a process, and it might be that, you know, animal care could, you know, emulate what the planning department uses as far as this process, maybe a similar mailing list, that way you get, you make sure notice goes out, so I would just, I wanted to ask that, for clarification purposes.
No, we can link that up with planning.
Okay, all right, and again, this came, and again, I know it took a while, it was, we got this in March, it came under separate cover to board members in response to the question that was asked last summer. I don't have any specific questions of LeAnn, nor the applicant, as my colleagues well recall, these chambers were, in good part, most of the seats were filled a year ago, we had a hearing relative to this matter, and obviously, a number of concerns had been raised at that time, not just by the appellant, but by adjacent neighbors, and those go back two summers ago, to August of 2017, when the first hearing before the Southeast Area Community Plan Advisor Council was held, there was an early workshop, and then open houses held by the Buckmasters, and then their hearing actually was in August of 2017. At that time, the CPAC heard concerns similar to what this board heard, obviously, they're in advisory role- Obviously, they're in advisory role, but they did, based upon what they learned, both from, obviously from the applicant, but from, you know, others who may have been there to weigh in on it, they, they were sufficiently, I think, confident that those things could be addressed through the environmental process and obviously through the public hearing process, and so they did recommend, recommend approval, again, many months ago. And since that time, obviously, as Mr. Avdus has said on behalf of the Buckmasters, but recognize there was an environmental document done that dove a little deeper into some of the issues, and again, I think substantively provided additional information regarding noise, which was, obviously was an issue that a number of folks that are adjacent had raised in public hearings before this board and at the zoning administrator hearing last year. So I guess, with that being said, without belaboring it, that in, in my view, and again, I've only heard from, in recent times, from, from one neighbor who had received the notice and had some questions about what the board was going to consider today, and so I did explain that, and, but in her case, she didn't, said she didn't intend to attend this hearing either. So I think that, you know, as this discussion has evolved, as it relates to, you know, what's being asked here, the sanctuary for the squirrel monkeys, and I think obviously with the information that's been provided by the applicant, including, you know, protocols for disease prevention for the event that one of the primates were to, you know, escaped the, you know, the sanctuary protocols for that, and then obviously records that, as Leanne mentioned, and is provided for the conditions, that provide records relative to the, you know, individual animal records, and so, and, and other information that might be of interest to, to parties who are, you know, adjacent neighbors or otherwise. And so I think, you know, there are sufficient, you know, informational cross-sections or intersections, but also the conditions, I think, reflect much with what was before us a year ago, but now obviously with the environmental documentation behind it. So with that in mind, and certainly with the understanding of the conditions, I think the, the extent to which this has been reviewed, and obviously the public scrutiny, but certainly the documentation behind it, I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation with the conditions as outlined, and appreciate, obviously, people's patience in the process, but this has been, you know, a couple of years, you know, in, you know, in getting to us for this, this discussion and, and decision today, but with that in mind, I'm prepared to move the item.
I'll second that, but we still have comments from board members. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I think the, the big problem in this is the county code, and I think it's reasonable for neighbors or anyone else who would read the county zoning code that talks about dogs and it talks about cats, and then there's, you know, just a tagline about care for small animals, animals on a commercial basis. I don't think that's sufficient information. If you're going to, in my mind, stretch the zoning code to include this type of animal, there need to be some suggestions, if not a list of the animals, some suggestions that, and I would say it ought to be unusual animals, I mean, there aren't that many people who would think of a, I mean, I didn't know what a squirrel monkey was before, I was online earlier trying to find out what a squirrel monkey sounded like, I mean.
And we now know how much it defecates.
Yes, yes, yeah, we know how much it defecates and what it sounds like, and so I think there needs to be more information in this code area about what the possibilities are, because if it were already there, not that if you bought a house nearby, you might not have read the zoning code, but when you, this came up, you got a notice, you could say, oh, instead of, I think when you see dogs and cats, you think, oh, dogs and cats in a kennel, but not monkeys or coyotes or hyenas.
Or elephants or rhinoceroses.
Elephants, yeah, right, yeah.
Lions and tigers and snakes.
Hyenas, whatever.
Yeah.
So I, I think that section of the code needs to be expanded. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Oh, I just wanted to thank the applicants for going the extra mile and investing. I know that we had to get all those questions answered, I guess, and I think it's great, I'm happy to support it. I think it's great that the squirrel monkeys who dedicated their entire life to providing, you know, to, to being subjected to research are now able to retire at a haven and finish out their lives rather than being put to sleep. So I think this is, hopefully, over time, after this is approved, people will begin to understand that it's not a, a negative impact to the community, but that it's, it's all good. So I'm happy to support it.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, just before, because I, I, it was a good point that Supervisor Peters raised, and I think it goes to the conversation we had last year about, you make this equivalent of a kennel or a cattery, and we do, you know, have another sanctuary, if not a couple in the county. I think that it, it would be useful, whether we specified all the animals or not, but that, you know, you may have a, if it's akin to that, but some provision for that, because as you said, you're not going to provide for these in suburban neighborhoods, but in the rural settings, they're provided for, as you outlined. And I think that it's important, because folks' idea of a sanctuary may very well be different, for better or for not, than a, what a, you know, a kennel or cattery. There may be similar noise and other types of activity that would be associated with, with those operations, but I think that there should be maybe some definition within the zoning code, and as Susan said, certainly the county code, I spoke to the wild animal permit that's in the county code, but I, I think that, I mean, as a learning experience for what we went through, and, you know, maybe we, you know, this board won't see another one of these for 20 years, but nonetheless, I think maybe there ought to be some out of this, rather than just, you know, the, you know, the chapter is closed on this particular one, but, you know, what in the future. So I would offer that as, maybe as you're looking at your code amendments.
If there's animals you haven't heard of before, I'd just throw a couple of names in there, so people would say, oh, and I wonder what other things might be permitted.
Ring-tailed lemurs.
Well, yeah.
Okay, anyway, okay.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no more comment, please vote.
And do we need, that includes a certification environmental document as well as the, the use permit and conditions?
Yeah, adoption of the finding certification of the environmental impact report.
Right. Thank you.
Unanimous vote. Now, we're on to our county executive comments.
No comment.
Members of the board, Ms. Frost.
I just wanted to mention, I, I've been receiving some emails and calls at my office that have been talking a lot about our booth at the CalExpo, the state fair, our exhibit that we have annually. I, I don't think this is something that our staff is personally doing, it's, might be something we're outsourcing through another organization. I think Flo had some pictures that we were going to bring up, and I just wanted to, well, maybe we don't even have to bring up the pictures, but the point I want to bring up is that we've always had an amazing exhibit at the fair, and this year, our exhibit was completely missing, and so it, it kind of, it made us look unorganized, and I wonder if the county executive would look into it.
Yes, yes, I am, yes. And we, we received similar type complaint, and we're going to be looking into it.
We don't, we don't have an exhibit at all?
There is.
We, Flo has a picture of our exhibit.
There's an exhibit, but the complaint that we received, that it's not, folks were unhappy.
Not on par with, with, because we've got gold medals.
They've come to expect.
Woefully inadequate.
Yeah, they expected something different, and what we are going to do is, and I'm looking at county council, make sure I'm not going too far, but we are going to work with Sacramento Visit Bureau to look for next year and what kind of changes we can make to bring a better exhibit.
I mean, I'm not advocating this, but they would have been better off doing nothing.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it just was, it just stood out as, look.
I would not disagree with you, that's part of the comment we got back from somebody that said you've been better off not having anything.
Right. It's a good investment TOT, TOT tax, if you want people to come here and visit, you showcase it at the state fair or something.
Ouch.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. Mr. Cerna.
Thank you, a couple items. First, Mr. Gale, I know you and I have had some kind of conversation in passing about this, but, and I've made my thoughts on the matter fairly public in recent weeks, but I'd like you to consider how you want to bring back to this board in the not-too-distant future, consideration of policy measures that speak to who, how discretion is applied when we have film crews that are anywhere on county property, including our correctional system, and whether or not that is even a good idea to begin with. I think, given the experience with the Jailbirds production, the Netflix production, the, I think the rightful criticism that this county is receiving about that, I am not interested in seeing that happen again, and I think it's high time we have a policy discussion about how, how to avoid it. The second thing is, I just wanted to.
By the way, on that, I wholeheartedly support you and agree with you.
I also just wanted to report out, I was not at the last board hearing because I was traveling out of state and then out of country. The out-of-state travel was associated with my duties as this board's representative for NACO, and it was in Las Vegas for their, for the annual conference. I just wanted to report out to the board and to our executive staff that I'm very honored to have been appointed by our incoming NACO president, Commissioner Mary Ann Borgerson from Douglas County, Nebraska. She has appointed me chairman of the NACO Health Policy Steering Committee for, for the year of her term.
Great, congratulations.
Thanks.
That's, could only be good for us.
What was the temperature in Las Vegas?
What's that?
What was the temperature in Las Vegas?
It was 109 at 7:00 PM. I'm not kidding.
It sounds like Paris.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we're adjourned.